Flag salute please.
It's okay. United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Bourbon County Commission Meeting, June the 10th. I want to say a word here before we get started. God bless the folks on D-Day. I've seen some of that on the news and God bless some of you veterans. I don't know, I know Mr. Walker is a veteran, I don't know who else is, but God bless all veterans, all active soldier men. Think what our life would be like wasn't for D-Day, so God bless America. So, thank you.
Amen. I will say this much, when they had the 50th anniversary of D-Day, I was down at Sherbrooke Prairie. Seventeen WWII veterans were with me. Not all of them served in Europe, some of them served in the Pacific to go there, but I had gentlemen that were crying because...
Yeah, I understand why.
They hated what he did.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
I know, we were crying mid-nom too, so, but D-Day was unbelievable what them soldiers went through. But, sorry, okay, not sorry, but I'm moving around the meeting here a little bit, gentlemen. Approval consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda, which is the minutes.
And a motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, public comments, we're going to restrict it to our five minutes tonight, we got a busy agenda. I hope we can get through our issues in five minutes, I hope, that's the plan anyway. Who's first?
I believe, Jesse, is it Walker?
Yes.
Jesse Walker. Good evening, Mr. Walker.
Good evening. I was here last month with Len O'Hara, and I'm here to ask about the situation of Unique Road that runs west of Ninety-Fifth Street. Okay, and I had no problem with the previous administrations helping me out, keeping the road fixed, however, when Len O'Hara became Commissioner, Jim Harris, at the time was Public Works Director, informed me that the road was not a county road and they would fix it one time, and it was up to me thereafter to keep it maintained. County also took down the Unique Road sign. Since then, the county has been maintaining the road off and on. About two months ago, Len O'Hara and me, Len O'Hara put up some property next to me for sale. He called me and informed me that the county was once again saying the road was not open. Later, we attended the county commission meeting together and asked for it to be public record that the road be open. Eric Bailey, the commissioner, and the commissioner said that it was open to around 14,000 feet at a time. I assumed that meant the whole section of Unique Road. Later on that month, someone come out and put out a white flag about three-quarters of the way up the road. I got curious and called Eric Bailey. He informed me that was all the county was going to maintain, the rest was not open. It was up to me. That was about 500 foot of it that's not open. I asked him why the county had been maintaining it before, and he said the county should not have been maintaining it. He said his personal opinion was that the county should not have to maintain or open any other road because there was just one house at the end of it and it was a lane. Laura Holdridge also told me the same opinion of the same thing. My question is, if the county has been taking care of the road for years, why has it now decided not to? And if it is open the whole length, can I get a copy of the minutes that states so? If not, I am going to may retain a lawyer to look into the matter sometime next month. And, I mean, even if the road is not publicly, or there's records of no public, if it's been public open or closed, there is case law and also Supreme Court precedents here in Kansas that, once the county starts maintaining the road, they're required to keep it maintained open. There's other roads that have all maintained that are dead and have one house on them. One of them is 115th and Soldier Road. I would just like to get this cleared up without having to go through all of them gone. But, if I have to, I'm going to attend a lawyer.
I understand. Let me say that back when I was the Public Works Director, I was told it was not a road, but you've had, your road's been open and closed more times than I'm aware of, but I'm not saying that jokingly, of course. But, what, your meeting when Mr. O'Hara was here, I believe Laura Holdridge said it was an open road, so many feet, 16, 15, 1600 feet. So, I probably, that's where Eric measured to, and she told him that beyond that point was private property. So, and really, in all fairness, you can't go by what we bladed in the past, because we've had county commissioners here that bladed 900 driveways a month, which was wrong.
But, the point is, is that's like me going to a restaurant every day, getting a full cup of coffee, and then coming in one day, and you give me three-quarter cup of coffee.
I got you, I understand.
And say, well, we shouldn't have been doing that.
Okay.
Well, you shouldn't have been giving you a full cup of coffee.
I understand.
That's not right.
Well, up to the commission, of course, we will visit with Eric, and we will visit with Laura, and we will visit with our legal counsel, and if that's as far as he tells us to go, he'll have to get a lawyer. Because I'm not going, I'm not going to ask Eric to do something that Laura says we're not supposed to be, and our county attorney, our county council tells us we're not supposed to be, it would be unfair to ask Eric to do that because the people behind you might not want it that way.
But, I don't understand just why, I mean, it makes no common sense, as Laura told me, I talked to her, and she said 90, or 1986, and that's when they started grabbing. As far as I can remember, the county has been maintaining that road, even when it was dirt. My grandparents lived up there, their house burnt down. My Uncle Hugh McHenry lived there, they maintained it, it was dirt, but I moved there, the school bus started driving up there to turn around, they started grabbing, maintaining it there.
We can ask the council to look at that case law you're referring to. I'm, I don't know if you're right or wrong, I don't want to argue with you, we just need to find out, so.
But, I just come down and talk to the county, that's what my intentions are.
We will find out, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to town to see us. Okay?
Vance Eden.
Vance Eden.
One other thing, can I get, how do I get the minutes to the last meeting?
You can make a court request.
Court request, the county clerk.
So, I come down, do you and you will have them for me?
Yes.
As Laura said, last time I talked to her, she said you didn't have them made up.
Well, she has a week to do that. There's a lag, yeah, there's a, there's a week lag. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Vance Eden.
I'm coming.
Oh, sir.
Hi, guys. So, I'm not here in my typical capacity, kind of representing the school as superintendent. Obviously, I've been a part of quite a few meetings, and in those meetings, quite a few times, it's mentioned about regarding solar developments, like, we have people show up that are opposed to those, but we never have anybody show up that is, that are for that. And so, I'm showing up, I am for that, and really, the main reason I'm for that are the tax implications. And so, I'm going to give you one of these.
Come on in, thanks, Vance.
I guess the first disclaimer, like, I want to say is, like, I'm not a tax accountant, I'm not a county appraiser, I don't know the things. I know how to research on the internet, I know how to call people and have conversations, and so that's how I've come up with these numbers. And so, you'll kind of see what I have listed there, and I can get, there's a few other copies if, if other people want one, when I'm done, you can have it. But, essentially, the research I did shows that the development of solar costs in equipment about a million dollars per megawatt. And so, essentially, every megawatt of development that would come to the county would be a million dollars of taxable property that would at some point become part of the tax roll. And we know that there's a 10-year abatement on those things provided by state statute. Right now, we know that there's a 600-megawatt project through Nextera, we also know there's some other conversations with other developers that could be an additional 600 or 800 megawatts. So, I just did some estimates. So, if I played on the safe side, and again, I want you guys to look at those numbers, and if I'm not doing it right, feel free to call me out, so we can fix it, but if we played on the safe side, in a most conservative kind of estimate, I think that we would figure the assessed valuation by calculating what's the equipment cost, when new, times what is the number of megawatts, times the depreciation, the state will depreciate it 20% at 10 years, so we'll get the 20% value, and then the tax assessment rate, which again is 20% on commercial tax. So, if I do those things, so if I say, instead of being worth a million dollars, let's say it takes them $700,000 in equipment, instead of saying 600 megawatts, let's say Nextera only develops 500 megawatts, if we multiply that times out 10 years at 20% depreciation, times the 20% commercial tax rate, that is a $14 million addition to the assessed valuation. And I think that that's meaningful. You see, I listed below the county tax rate, or the county tax assessed valuation is $119,000,29,000, that was off an assessment from a year or two ago I found on the internet. And then the school districts is $22 million, $22,878. And so, like, to find the implications, essentially for me to say, well, if we, if we didn't try to get more money out of those projects, if we just tried to lower the mill levy, so we got the same number of dollars 10 years from now, but lowered the mill levy to do so, what would that do to people's taxes? And so, if you're a county resident, your county tax, there'd be an additional $14 million of assessed valuation increase, which would mean your taxes would decrease by 10.5% to generate the same revenue. And I think that's meaningful. If you live, obviously, like, the community colleges, theirs is figured on that same kind of county-wide assessment, again, you're going to see a 10.5% increase. If you happen to live in the Union Town School District, that's much more, because that property is in the Union Town School District, or the greatest portion of it. And so, residents living in the Union Town District would see a 37.98% reduction in taxes to generate the same amount of revenue. Now, if we take that to a different, and again, if you look at those and some of that there doesn't seem right, then please feel free to interrupt, or correct me there. If we do a less conservative estimate, let's say those developers develop the entire projects, and let's use, so that very top source that I cited is Larry DeBoer, he's a former professor at the University of Purdue, and he did a massive research into the economic impacts of the solar projects in the state of Indiana. And I actually reached out, reached out to him and had a meeting with him, yeah.
Have 30 seconds, unless they do want to extend your time.
Perfect, that's great.
They can if they want to.
You bet. So, if we change that estimate, and we say it's a million dollars in equipment, the full number of megawatts would be 1,400 megawatts, times 20% depreciation, times 20% commercial tax. That then creates a 32% reduction in countywide taxes, and for the school district, it would be a 78%, but that would bring you below the minimum mill levy. So, that would say, the minimum you could do would be 60% reduction in taxes, but that would just generate an extra $701,000 for the school to use, at the smallest mill rate in the state of Kansas.
The gentleman wanting to extend his time, or is he...
That's, I don't care where they're at. Glad you brought that up, though.
Sure, I do have, yeah, just a few other things, yeah, go ahead.
Yo, go ahead.
Go ahead. And so, I think, I think, when I think about that, again, I'm not representing the school, but there's not a lot of industry in my half, in the county, the half of the county that I live in, and I feel like this is probably one of the few opportunities to increase our assessed valuation in a way that benefits not only the school, but the fire departments, the townships, the cemeteries, all those districts in a meaningful way. I think that it maybe provides a stimulus for other, stimulus across the county, businesses looking to relocate, all of a sudden, they would be really looking to relocate into an environment where taxes are lower, whether that be in our school district or within the county itself. And I think that, you know, yeah, if we chose to not reduce that the most we could, you'd be looking at opportunities to, to extend services and provide some things that haven't been an option for, for our community in the past. But, to give an idea of perspective, Burlington's nuclear power plant will produce 1,200 megawatts. And, right now, we're talking about potentially 1,400 megawatts. And, anyone that goes to Burlington and sees their things, they come back and they say, like, man, they have nice things there. And Burlington, I think their assessed valuation, or their mill levy is at 27 mills, so almost the state minimum, but they have all this extra revenue because there's industry and a tax base there to support that. So, I guess, I guess I hope that you'll keep that in mind. Of course, there are people that oppose to it, and I absolutely understand why neighbors would be opposed to the projects. Of course, there are people who benefit, I understand, you know, landowners are going to benefit from those leases, but I really do believe that schools and tax entities, and also just the regular citizens, there's a significant amount of benefit to them. Jim, you mentioned, like, what, something about, what can I tell my grandson years from now that I accomplished, you know? And being able to say, like, I've reduced taxes by 30%, I've reduced his Union Town's taxes by 60% plus helped them have enough money to build the thing without a bond, and do the thing without a bond, and that, I think that those are really meaningful conversations, and again, I understand why some people are opposed to it, but I guess I, I wanted to have a conversation, and I want, if somebody finds out these aren't the right numbers, again, I want to be corrected on that, but I do believe that's correct from, I guess, my limited understanding of mill levy law.
You're not that far off with your number, and I want, I'm not against solar panels, I don't even think anybody thinks I'm against solar panels, bringing revenue into county. We got to make sure that, because our job as government is to protect people, that's our job, right? So, but, to your numbers, the numbers are great for the taxes, for what the county can provide for public, public anything, right, lots of money. But, you mentioned putting out the same megawatts as what Wolf Creek does. Wolf Creek is 9,800 acres, and not all of that is used by the power plant, but it was all encompassed by the power plant. To get the same amount of megawatts from solar, it's 15,000 acres. So, there's a trade-off.
Of course.
And again, I'm not against them.
Of course.
But, you got to look at both sides, positive and negative. Positive is, we will have a lot of money. I mean, it's going to be, if we, if we negotiate, right, we're going to get a lot of money for the school systems and everything in county. So, to be clear, we're not against them, or I'm not against them, I'm just, we got to make sure that, that they're safe and they're in the right locations. We've got lots of places in Bourbon County that you could fill a whole section of solar panels, and there's not anybody around them, right? So, that's, yeah. So, don't think we're fighting the solar panels, we're fighting, we're trying to make it, make it right for everybody.
Sure.
And, and I appreciate your presentation, and a person mentioned to me that somewhere, someone printed a 45,000 acre target in Bourbon County. That is so far incorrect, it's unbelievable. I don't know where that number came from, it doesn't matter, but it's so far incorrect, it's unbelievable, that 45,000 acre, it's not even a fifth of that. Sorry, anyway.
And I somewhat agree with Brandon's numbers, I mean, you can do some math online and figure out megawatts, acres per megawatt, and again, that number's 10,000, 12,000.
Well, thank you, appreciate it very much. Very, very good point, sir.
Well, we have an opportunity to meet, I know we didn't get a chance, but...
I hope so, I haven't heard about Mr. Meeks yet, on your rebuttal.
You bet.
So...
You have my phone number, just call me when you need me.
I intend to, thank you.
Thanks, Vance.
Can I ask a question relative to that? I exist for anyone.
No. We're not going to get there. You can go out in the hallway and ask him, please. We're not going to get out of order today, Katie, I'm sorry. We've got a lot on the agenda, if you want to go out and have business with Mr. Eden, he's right there, please do so, he'll answer your questions.
Well, it's about how things are taxed, so he probably can't answer.
Okay, all right, Clifton, who's next?
Pete Onlby.
Pete Onlby, good evening, Pete.
How are you?
I'm good, and you, sir?
I got a question on that right there, too. When does that money kick in on the windmills?
It did last year, I think.
The taxes, the 10-year tax abatement, so, yeah, basically, eight, nine years.
So, in nine years, we're going to be getting that much money from the windmills then?
Yeah, that was...
Boy, we're going to be rich.
Depends, I mean, the assessed value.
Governor Brownback did that.
Yeah, but in nine years, though, we're going to be rich.
Yeah.
The windmills are set up slightly differently. So, the windmills, our pilot money is the pilot money for X amount of years, and this is where the windmills get screwy over the solar. I read that deal in the state of Kansas today, and the windmills, they can, they can pretty much depreciate everything the first seven years, so then by the time the taxes kick in, the taxes are different rate.
So, the solar doesn't depreciate in 10 years?
Not like, the numbers you brought for the depreciation of the solar is different than mine, so they don't depreciate, they're not depreciated the same as the windmills.
They just depreciate to 20%.
Basically, the windmills last, or the solar lasts a lot longer than the windmills do, is what it amounts to.
Everything I've read on it, they're replacing the panels very shortly because they've come out of date.
I can't tell you that, honey.
Okay, I did a court request for the lawyer you used to rebut the information our counsel gave us. You turned me down.
Yes.
On the grounds of client privilege, attorney-client privilege.
Yes.
Did you speak to the lawyer as a commissioner or as a private citizen?
I'm not going to answer, because I don't remember, but either way, it doesn't matter, it's attorney-client privilege, and memory of what I had, I had on.
So, we can't get in that...
No, you're not entitled to my conversation with my lawyer, you're in nobody else's room is, so...
Well, I just want to know, does the, does the county, did the county pay for the lawyer?
No.
Huh.
Now, one of them, we belong to organizations, we pay yearly dues to, but we don't hire him.
So, so we're not going to get a rebuttal from that?
No, you're not. I made very clear, my, my statement, I, back to the county clerk, that's attorney-client privilege, that's my right to claim that, and anybody else's right in this room to claim that, and you're not entitled to that information, and no one in this room's going to get that information.
Okay, um, I just wanted, so we can't get a receipt for the lawyer either, so we don't, we don't even know that, we're just going off your words that we took, that you talked five words.
Well, whatever, I say, Pete, you're not going to believe me anyways, doesn't matter.
Well, I'm not trying, here to fight with you, Jim.
I'm not either, Pete, but you're...
I talked to KDHE this week, too, I talked to two people there, asking one engineer questions, and he just said, uh, no comment. Asking another question, no comment. Then I asked him, why would, why would, why would not comment? His answer was, he was unqualified to comment. So, can you give me a phone number for somebody that's qualified to comment to my questions?
I will give you some numbers after the meeting, the people I have talked to, but I don't know what I'm going to tell you.
I just, I want, yeah, I'd just kind of like to know about that. Right here's a resolution that Len O'Hara, Jeff Fisher, and whoever else at the time signed. Something else for you guys to look at, it's code of conduct, sir. Quite a bit of good information in there, put that in the, in my, or deal, please.
But, you have a minute and a half, Pete.
Okay. Um, so, Clifton and Jim, you're both running for reelection, right? And Brandon, you're up for reelection, too?
That's correct.
You guys are all three running as Republicans, correct?
I am running as Republican, I think they are too, but I don't know that, so...
How long you guys been in the Republican Party?
Well, number one, it's none of your business, my personal choice of what's in the public. Now, you're getting out of line, Pete.
I'm not out of line, I had to ask you a question.
You're not, that's not your business.
We're not up here campaigning right now, Sue.
Yeah, it's all in my campaign signs, look, I'm a Republican, and what I do in my personal life is none of your business, or nobody else's business, and what you do in your personal life, or these ladies do in their personal life, is not my business.
I've been a Republican my entire life, I'll tell you that much.
I'm glad, I'm proud.
Yeah, yeah, I was just wondering how long you've been a Republican and why you switched, but, there you go, there's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else, Clifton?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Southeast Kansas Multi-County Health Department, miss, I think she's back or somewhere.
I think I chose the wrong evening to come out.
There's my card, because we haven't met before.
Just take them and pass them around, keep those.
There you go, there you go. All right. It's a little intimidating this evening with all these people here, okay. All right, well, I'm here at, asking, doing my annual funding request for the SCK Multi-County Health Department, like I said, I'm Becky Johnson, Administrator and Health Officer for the county. We are continually expanding and adding new programs to better serve Bourbon County and the surrounding population. Below are a few of the activities and accomplishments for SCK for, during the 23, 24 year. I wrote this when, it's quite a huff, it's been April 30th, so it's a little bit, a little bit behind now, but we recently had a tetanus shot clinic for persons affected by the flooding, we are getting ready to have our community baby shower on the 18th. Some of my nurses and I attended the statewide infectious disease symposium, the Kansas Immunization Conference, and then two of my nurses just finished an in-home led investigation certification program. Trainings during the year that we've had, one of our nurses became a CPR trainer, one nurse and one home visitor became trained as car seat safety technicians, so we're able to offer that to the county and the community now. Another home visitor was trained as a safe sleep instructor, so that's in the prevention of SIDS. We attended the Four Corners Emergency Management Conference in Branson, and the Governor's Public Health Conference, we were able to attend in the spring, and then one of, and then my biller was able to attend the biller symposium. And then we also haven't had a WIC conference in a long time since COVID, so we were able to attend that as well. We are proposing a request of 95,750 for the year of 2025, and this is the same amount as the previous year's request. We greatly appreciate your continued support as we grow and strive to better serve Bourbon County. If you have any questions, let me know, and we made this report up for you, something kind of new for us this year, instead of just giving you our brochure.
What was that number?
95,750.
And that's the same as last year, correct?
Same as last year's request, mhm. I hired a gal this year to do our marketing and outreach, and she's the one who's created this report, so we've, are using her to do reports like this, and to do marketing and outreach in each of our communities, as well as become more of a presence on Facebook and other avenues to help educate the community and provide information and services, and do you have any questions for me, or?
Oh, I think you should pat yourself on the back, I think Becky deserves a pat on the back. I mean, I think people realize she got to go to speak at the, in, in Topeka, she's pretty well recognized for what she does, we're pretty, pretty fortunate to have her. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
It was really neat, I, so...
And you know the budget process, we'll be starting it, and you'll be on the list.
Well, we'll keep doing what we're doing whether you do or not, so...
We haven't even discussed what our goals are, Pete's commissioners, I know what mine is, but that's, we'll go for it, we'll get ready, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, let me know if you have any...
Do you have any question, Brandon?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Done outstanding job.
Okay, I've been looking forward to this one. Pike Lake Root, who's the spokesperson?
It would be me, I'm Roxy Craig.
Good evening, Roxy.
We're here to present you with the landowner petitions against the Pike's Reservation, the Pike's Reservoir Project. As you can see, we got 68 of the landowner petitions, and as you can see, the majority of the landowners oppose this project. We still have petitions coming in from landowners, as well as general petitions. We know, they say that it is dead in the water, but in fact, it's really not, it can be brought back in January 2025. Jack Ripper, Real Water District Number Four Manager, stated that it would cost $9 million low... Jack Ripper, Real Water District Number Four Manager, stated that it would cost $9 million low ball range for pipework alone in the buyout area to build this reservoir lake, which would be put on the taxpayers of Bourbon County. And people were upset about an $8 million correctional facility. How do you think they will feel about a lake project in northwest Bourbon County, not even close to Fort Scott? That's going to cost them more taxpayer dollars. We, as Bourbon County citizens, would like to know where you all stand on the, on the project before we make it to the ballot box. Are y'all for or against it?
I am absolutely against Pike Lake Reservoir. I, I don't think it benefits the county where they want it to put it. And again, it's another district, one thing to fire that I got to try to put out. But I'll work with it, and as soon as I get a set down with one of the senators that was behind it, I will have a, a dialogue conversation with him, and we'll go from there. I will try to dangle a different area in front of him, maybe they want to lay down over there a little closer to Fort Scott or something like that. But, uh, I, I stand in front of him, he's putting a lake where they put it, there's just no, there's no reason to put one there. Nobody wants to sell out, well, maybe one person.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Okay, well, I'll go next. I do not support eminent domain in any situation. Uh, I do believe in water supply, but I'm working, as I mentioned, these guys, a smaller one in the southwest, where if it was to be built, it would be used in state money, but all these people want it. It would be no eminent domain, and it's, it's the Pike dream right now.
Yeah.
And it's closer to the Martin, Martin River, so it would much easier to get that water to Fort Scott Water Plant, which supplies water from most, a lot of Bourbon County. So I do not support Pike Creek Lake because of eminent domain. Now, if you all wanted it, I would be helping you get it, but if you don't want it.
No, we absolutely don't.
I, I'm against it, eminent domain, so.
Okay, thank you.
Against it, I have been from day one.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We certainly appreciate it.
For your hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Um, I was, uh, I know that, um, we could go and kill this re- the Pike's Reservoir for good on a local level, um, because, uh, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, the Army Corps of Engineers knew nothing about it. I called the Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission, they knew nothing about it either, until they read about it in the Fort Scott Biz. If the state was not involved, the federal government was not involved either, it could die right here, right now. I don't see any reason for it to be, be pursued at any other time at all. Um, would you all vote now against it, or not?
I don't know what we'd be voting against, because there's nothing, there's nothing to vote against.
Okay, because it's not?
Because it's, yeah, it's, I mean, so I, I mean, I don't, I guess I don't know what we would be voting against, because if nothing to vote against.
And, and we've stated we're, we don't support eminent domain.
I mean, I'm pretty, yeah, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure Topeka knows how I feel.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Thank you, there's your petition right over there.
Yeah, um, on these, did they get those back, or does?
I don't know.
Um, I always, we have copies.
You have them? Okay, okay, so if you don't care, I'm gonna give them to Jennifer then.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for all your hard work, folks, so, okay. Anything else, Pike Creek? I'm moving on, is that, is that it?
No, I'm just breathing.
Okay. Sheriff Bill Martin, K-9 Retirements, please.
I have a question.
Hang on, hang on, Kevin for a second, she wanted, what?
I'm sorry.
Now, I have a question. If we were to, like, present a resolution, like, with the solar, to where you would, would there be any opportunity that you would all sign and saying there is not going to be?
I'm sorry, that's a different subject. That's a different subject, Pike Creek and, and solar panels.
No, no, I'm not talking about solar. I'm talking, according to the Pike Lake, if we asked, brought forth a resolution that would be requesting that none of, no development like this would occur within the next 10, 20, like Cali County, would you oppose that?
So that, so, so that, that resolution actually says by a private individual, okay? So, that doesn't, if you read into that resolution, that, what you're talking about, it really doesn't affect if the government wanted to do it. It doesn't, it doesn't do anything, because it clearly states that's a private development, is what they stopped in Cali County.
Yeah.
My understanding, this was not a private development, this was the state doing this. So unfortunately, that resolution wouldn't, it wouldn't apply to what you're, what you're fighting.
And appreciating, appreciating that, Jill Franklin, um, we do know that this all got started by private individuals wanting to make money off it, who went to these senators and said, would you please put this forward? So it may actually be appropriate.
It wouldn't hold water though, because it's still not a private developer putting the money up, because that's what Cali County says. It would have to be a private developer developing it.
Another way to do that, that prevents.
Daniel, Daniel better carrot in front of him.
The unfortunate, yeah, yeah, the unfortunate, the unfortunate thing is, is, say, the new, uh, the lady, whoever is running up there wants to do it, she could bring it back up, you know? Anybody can bring it back up, I mean, that's, they're right, no different if you ran to be Senator, House, or House Representatives, you could bring it back up. I mean, but I think it's pretty clear the way everybody feels down here.
Yeah, we appreciate you going on there tonight to say that.
Yes, we do, thank you very much.
The answer to the ask has not been that clear, and we really appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're up here just letting you guys know, there's only two copies, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Let you guys know that we're retiring another K-9. We, uh, got a free K-9, sorry, a free K-9 from Lubbock County donated to us. Um, it got a little bit of use, but not very much, so it was free, didn't cost us anything, and, uh, we're going to retire it without a service, and we went to K-9, just looking for a signature for me.
You wear these dogs out or something? Because you sure got, no, I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
Well, he is used to running with one dog.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. You know I'm kidding.
Oh, I'm making a motion. Guest on.
Second.
Got a motion and second?
And, um, with discussion?
With discussion.
I'm gonna add that Chairman Harris signs the agreement, because it only has your signature on it, instead of all three of us.
We're proud of our K-9, and we're proud of you guys stepping up and getting them good homes, so. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. I've signed that one, so. There you go, thank you, thank you, thank you. Good job, we appreciate it. Uh, Ms. Jennifer Hawkins, County Clerk, please. Good evening.
So I actually received another KDHE notice today, so I will be talking about two today. One is for, um, registration has been received for a proposed facility at 2555 Locust Road. Um, this is from the, um, Department of Health and Environment for a, um, like, it's going to be for a feedlot, a feedlot.
Is that from Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Okay.
So they do not have any type of animal units listed on here, um, for that.
Okay, I can comment on that. I did call the gentleman that signed that original permit, and I was told there was a misunderstanding from the inspector and the property owners, that that permit was going to be thrown in the trash, because it's open grazing, it wasn't a feedlot. Uh, a few cows, it was, it was discussion between two neighbors, wasn't going well. So KDHE got involved and did an inspection, was no violations, uh, but the inspector told one property owner, maybe you should file for a feedlot permit, which he did, but that person, Topeka, says it's not necessary, it's open grazing, he threw it in the trash, but anyway, that's what I know.
Perfect.
Okay.
The next is for a, um, reissuance of a Kansas NPDES Water Pollution Control Permit for an existing facility, and this is for the city of Fulton. So the permit, or the public notice is available in our office, um, clerk's office, for anybody who has any questions or comments, they can come in and get KDHE's, um, number. The next thing I have is Jared Gilmore Phillips, our accounting, or the audit firm we use, has sent a request to do our fiscal year December 31st, 2024 audit, and they are asking for a signature on that. So I sent this all to you.
Okay, so we'll need a motion on that one.
Make a motion to allow Jim, Chairman Harris, to sign the, uh, the audit, uh, audit scope. Anyway, we'll audit the financial statement to Bourbon County as of and, and for the year ending December 31st, 2024. Uh, that would be for Jared Gilmore Phillips to perform that audit.
And it says another, I'm sure that's the same thing Jennifer sent us, but it says a price there, so thank you for letting that out, so.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
So the next thing on this is the committee letters that you asked for, for the, um, individuals who are interested in joining. Um, committee is June 12th, so we will be those in our office by 4:30. If you're interested, please make sure they are unsealed, um, and vote and clearly marked committee application or committee letter.
Okay. Have you received any?
I received two.
Let's start, okay.
All right, so the next thing I have is Resolution 07-24, this is the 2024 Salary Resolution for Elected Officials. Um, this is per the auditors' recommendation that we need to do this yearly, so that's, um, I emailed this to you as well.
I was wondering where that came from in July, this late, but I thought maybe the auditors, but.
Yes, yes, that was a recommendation, so we were trying to do everything by the book, that's why we have it now.
Make a, uh, motion to, uh, based off the recommendation by Phillips, by them, right, Jared Gilmore and Phillips?
Yes, Jared.
To do this resolution, 7-24, 2024 Salary Resolution for Elected Officials.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, and then, um, I received some fireworks permits, um, late in the day in my office, so I'd like to amend the agenda to get those, um, approved and signed by the chairman, so we can get those out, so they can start selling fireworks in just a few weeks.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to allow, um, Jennifer to present some fireworks permits to us.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, so we have two, um, one is, two for Jake's Fireworks, uh, one is at the corner of Wall and Goodlander. The other is at 2221 South Main in Fort Scott. So they have paid the $75 permit fee, and they just have to have these signed and put any conspicuous place in their tent.
Make a motion to, uh, have Chairman Harris sign these two fireworks license permit for Jake's Fireworks. One's at Wall and Goodlander, and the other's at 2221 South Main.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I have one more, it is for Hale Fireworks LLC, it is for 2523 South Main Street in Fort Scott.
Make a motion to allow Chairman Harris to sign the fireworks permit for Hale Fireworks at 20, 2523 South Main.
I second.
Got a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for all that information too, thank you, so. Okay, action on NRP refunds. I'm sure you all probably got this from Susan or Jennifer.
So I have extra copies.
I'm sure I got some more.
Yeah. It appears that our CFO has recommended, let me explain to the crowd, I'll just a little bit. There's been some errors in the Neighborhood Revision Program the last few years on distributions, uh, short-pawned and honest mistakes, that I'm aware of, that, uh, we still owe distributions for those years. That's to the cemetery in the city, U-235, some townships and fire districts, an amount of $33,431.37. And we have two choices on how we can reverse this. We can take it out of the Prazer's Fund for 2024 and see where we wind up in the end of the year, budget year. Or we can go after and activate his bond, or not his, their Prazer Bond, the company, the county bond, it's not his bond. But that's our two choices, uh, to pay this money to the tax entities that it's owed to and close this matter up. Because we, thanks for Jennifer and Patty and our CFO, they have put in a lot of safeguards. As a matter of fact, I think there's like, well, there's seven of them, so I don't think this will happen again. I don't believe it will. You know, we, we try to learn from our mistakes, so I think these ladies have done a fine job of putting place, things in place to go forward, to avoid this happening again. We just, as a commission, decide how we want to pay this. Now, I'm one commissioner, I'm not in favor invoking that bond, I'm in favor of taking it out of the Prazer Budget, and, which is a general fund, it seems at the, in, in general, excuse me, I'm sorry, I thought that was turned off. Uh, we usually have some carryover at the end of the year that could make this up, I believe. So we have departments to give money back, and we do other things at the end of the year, so. I think we can recover this $33,341.37 out of the general budget, in my opinion. So that's my thought. Brandon?
I mean, we owe it to them, so, I don't want, I don't want to pay it back, I don't want it. So if we can all have a general fund and loop stuff around and make sure everything's good to go and recovered, then we can do that.
Clifton, you agree?
Sounds good to me.
Well, that, that gives us time, and again, at the end of the year, for several years, we see a little carryover, how the general, that could make this up and not invoke that bond. Well, I, I would, that's just, we just don't want to do that, so, all right. Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Is it Prazer?
I pray, yeah. An amount of $33,431.37 come out of the Prazer's Fund. That was a motion, do I hear a second?
Yes.
Got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, commission comments?
Yeah, I got a lot, guys.
Okay, we're listening.
Um, so I tried to ask about something last week, and was told we would have an executive session, we did not. All I want is a timeline, Clifton, on immigrants, taxpayers, or at least of that.
Yeah.
He's getting ready to talk about that, what else?
Oh, he's getting ready to talk about that. Okay, well, we had an executive session, my very first one when I called in. Then we talked about some stuff, and, uh, I thought it was, it was in the executive session, I didn't know we could talk about that to other people. But there's a Facebook post that talked about that.
Really?
Yep.
Who was in the executive session?
You.
And you?
Me.
Who else? Him?
Clifton and Meeks.
Meeks, okay.
Because it was about a person. The very first thing he said at the executive session is, we pay this person X amount of dollars, and we could get it cheaper if we went to?
Baker Tilly.
Baker Tilly. Kind of thought that was privileged information, I mean, I didn't know we was spreading that around.
I wasn't. I, I don't believe Commissioner Beth was, I don't believe Councillor Meeks was, I, I don't know what to tell you.
Well, how would they get that information? I mean, I don't even know the person, I just.
I don't know. If I answer you, I'd be lying, I'd be guessing. Uh, I know the person you're referring to, I'm not going to talk about it in here. It's a bit of identifiable personnel, so we would need to go on an executive session if we're going to talk about this employee anymore than what we're doing, so. It's not identifiable. So you want to do that?
Well, she gave me permission to talk about it.
She don't have that authority, she don't have that authority to give you, but we, none of us have the right to talk about identifiable personnel, works for the county in this open meeting, I don't care if she gave you the cow, I don't mean, I'm not being a smart ass here, but we can go on an executive session if you want to talk about one of our employees.
No, that's fine, I was just trying to figure out how the information got out to the public, because I don't know anybody involved in that, I don't even know the Baker Tilly people. I do know that they're probably going to cost the city of Fort Scott a lot of money.
No, that's not true, but.
No, they're not.
Um, anyways, I just was, I mean.
Good question, I don't know.
I guess I don't, I didn't see the Facebook post, so I don't know.
And I don't get on Facebook, like, every once in a while, my son. And I don't get on Facebook, every once in a while, my son say, you better read this.
It was sent to me, so I don't know who they, who they got the information from, but secondly, more, more professional, I would like to be able to act in an official capacity and deal with these solar people in District One. I mean, I will, I will be forthwith with all the information, I'll come back to every meeting, my executive session, we can talk about it.
You mean to the landowners and the companies? Or both?
Only if it's going, only if it's going to District One, I'll deal with them in District One.
Well, you can't make, or you can't make decisions on your own, basically, you can't say, well, you can't come, or you, or can come.
I, I realize that, I'm not, but.
You can do the same action as the employees, you can outturn the county, even if we give you permission to act on our behalf, you would be very, 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 very limited on decisions you could make, if any, without consulting us.
Yeah.
Well, we just can't give you a blank check on that project, or him on a project, or any other project, go out and make decisions.
Well, I would never make decisions without the commission and the public knowing.
So what do you, what do you, I guess what do you ask?
I don't understand your question then.
To talk to them, you're welcome to do that, I mean, I have no problem with that.
I don't have a problem with talking to them. I hope you can gather information, and I hope you can work with all these folks. As you know, we talked about you going out and talking to them about setbacks, and I hope you can work things out.
Okay.
I really do, I hope you can. I think you might be the man for the job.
Okay.
So, I hope, anyway. What else?
Nothing, I did make some calls to KDHE today over the solar panel stuff, and there's a guy there that actually knows about the solar panel stuff, the health benefits, the health risks.
Would you show that guy, Pete, please?
The setbacks, and as soon as he called me back, we'll have a discussion.
Good.
I do have a phone call scheduled with the solar people on Wednesday.
Good.
So.
Good.
And hopefully I can schedule a sit-down with them, with me and a couple of other people, so that they can start working on stuff, so.
I think that's fantastic, so.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
So, other than that.
Cliff, you're next.
Yeah, tentatively, there'll be an announcement about healthcare Thursday at 10:00 AM.
Did everyone hear that? There will be a healthcare announcement.
10:00 AM Thursday morning.
10:00 AM Thursday morning.
Tentatively, at the Old Mercy Hospital Building.
Are you having a real open meeting?
Haven't got there yet, haven't got there yet, Michael, you're ahead of the game. Get your horse back in the stable.
I will say.
We are not having a meeting, there's a.
We will make a motion that we're going to be there, but we're not having a meeting, but I will say this, this firm, God bless Bourbon County.
That's, yeah, don't say that.
That's all I can say. Join us Thursday morning at the hospital building.
They'll be calling you, Jason?
Pardon me?
They'll be calling the paper.
Yeah.
So with that said, I would make a motion that there's a chance commissioners will be in the same vicinity or same room, no official county business will be conducted.
I second that. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. What else, Cliff?
Sir?
I really don't have anything. I'm sure I was rude earlier a little bit, but I'm real, real defensive about people's personal business, including mine. I, I think I've been a Republican for 15 years, I think, but I'm thinking there, and at my age, I'm going to be honest with you, I have problems trying to remember where I was at yesterday. I'm being, I'm not being funny, but it's just, some of you know that, but, you know, my personal business and my personal life is my business as much as it's your business. I mean, I just don't believe people should be intruding on other people's rights, I mean, I just don't believe that, property, personal, so, and Pete, if I was rude, I didn't mean to be, but I'm just real touchy about personal. So that's my business, and that's your business, so, that's all I have. Anything else, gentlemen? Ladies and gentlemen? Your motion adjourned, please.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, David.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You all did a good job.
We're, we're still working. Yes, we, we most certainly do, I'm very proud of the team we have, very proud of. Thank you. It works together.
Is it?
I was being. Okay, and thank you.
It's gonna pop back up in January. It's the anniversary, so go ahead and get this meeting turned on.